Call the meeting in order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Scott?
Here.
We have a consent calendar, are there any corrections or additions to that? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. We have the public comment section. Council welcomes all respectful comments regarding cities business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Are there any people that would like to speak? Any person?
Hi, my name is Brenda Ogle. My address is 1073 Cherry Blossom Lane here in Lebanon.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. What was your name?
Brenda Ogle. Sorry, I'm fighting a cold.
That's okay. No problem.
And did you need my address again?
Please.
1073 Cherry Blossom Lane, here in Lebanon. I was just sent information that you might be discussing removing fluoride from the water in Lebanon Sweet Home, so I just brought information for that. I wasn't expecting to just come up and address it. I was here in case somebody was here to speak against or speak for taking it out.
Okay.
But I did bring information, if I can pass it out.
Sure. And we do plan on addressing, it won't be addressed at this meeting. We had mentioned maybe, but we've decided that it'll be at a later meeting that we'll discuss that. And we'll have that out in the public. It'll be in the paper when we're going to discuss the actual issue.
Okay. So then, I don't necessarily need to stay today?
Okay.
Or should I stay unless it's...
There won't be any discussion about that, so. Appreciate you coming, though.
Thank you. I'll fill this out and then I'll be rushed.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public?
Can I have that? It was the last one.
You can have it.
Okay, seeing none. We'll move into the regular session. The Republic Services review of the 2014 proposed fees. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you today is the proposed rate increases for Republic Services for solid waste fees to the residents and citizens of Lebanon. It's all part of a 2012 annual report in which Republic Services comes before the council to review the basis for their proposed rate fees. I believe Kevin Hines and Julie Jackson from Republic Services are here to tell the council exactly how that was determined and what it means.
Morning. Kevin Hines, 5125 Alpharetan Drive, Albany, Oregon.
I'm Julie Jackson. I live at 630 Southwest 7th Avenue in Albany.
Okay, so thank you for the time that you've given us here today. So, we met with Mr. Levesque a couple of weeks ago discussing the annual report. This is our second year presenting our annual report. And, you know, it's a 22-page annual report. Our, you know, the reason for being here today was to summarize that report and then also have some discussion on the rate increase that was proposed back in May of 2012. So, a little brief history. In May of 2012, I was in here for a rate increase and then a rate methodology change going forward for Republic Services. And it's what we had heard over the last few years. A history of how our rate increases have been presented in the past was typically every two to three years, we'd come in for a rate increase, you know, of roughly 7%, 9%, 11%, you know, depending upon what the need was. And it's what we were hearing from some of our jurisdictions was, you know, that was, although, you know, agreed upon and passed, that was a little bit difficult to swallow looking at, you know, a 9% or 11% increase. So it was what they asked us to do, was come up with a process that was more of an annual-based rate methodology rather than, you know, every two to three years. So if you look on page 16 of our annual report, and this was, I guess, by the way, this was presented last year and passed by the council. And I know since then, we have a new city manager, mayor, and several councillors. So, I just wanted to give a brief description of what that process was and, you know, the reason why it was passed last year. So, again, looking at more of a smaller annual increase, we came up with basically a CPI index. And this is something that we've, we have passed with some of our other jurisdictions. We've gone through our legal departments, some other jurisdictions' legal, and this is the process that we came up with. Starting, so it's actually called a refuse rate index. Partially 65% of just our regular CPIU and a disposal and a fuel component. And the reason why we've added the disposal and the fuel component is those are our two major or largest costs of operations in this type of industry. So, we've taken, as you can see, just the regular CPI, weighted that at 65%. We've taken disposal fee and weighted that at 25% and then a fuel component of 10%. And those are roughly what our costs are of those two areas. You can look at the chart down below, how that is weighted out and how we calculated the 2.6% increase for this next year. And looking at the CPI piece, so 1.9% CPI change weighted at 65%, comes out to the 1.3%. The disposal piece of a 4% increase in disposal cost, weighted out to 25, is roughly 1%. And then the same with the fuel of 3.2%, weighted at 10%, comes out to .3. So that's how we've calculated the 2.6% increase this coming year. A couple of things that we've also added into this index is, one, we have capped our disposal cost at 4% because, you know, we do own the Coffin-Butte landfill. It is part of our company. So we have put a cap in there of a 4% increase that, you know, that piece can't increase more than 4%. And then we've also put in a cap of 10% on our margins. So, this isn't just an annual increase that's going to go on forever and expand our margins. We have capped that out at a 10% also. And then the last thing that we wanted to put in here is we wanted to make sure that we still had the opportunity to come in for service level increases. For instance, if we wanted to increase our recycling programs, our yard programs to a weekly scheduled pickup, we could also come in and do that. So, I mean, that's a brief discussion. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to take a look through this, but this is something that we presented, like I said, in 2012. It was passed by the council at that time going forward. And I wanted to just make sure that everybody was aware of this process since there has been some changes in the council. So, at that point, I can take any questions. And then Julie here is going to go over the summary of our 22-page annual report. I don't think you want to be going through 22 pages.
Yeah, I've got some questions. You answered one of my questions. That was about the ownership of Coffin-Butte.
Okay.
Coffin-Butte's your single largest line item, both in your cost of operations and in your, well, it's not quite your largest in your index change. It's 40% or 38% of your index change is Coffin-Butte on your largest single line item in cost operations.
Correct.
Can we get some information from you on the financial performance of Coffin-Butte? There was, why is it so expensive to put garbage in a hole in the ground? I mean, I know there's some operation costs. I'm just curious what the net numbers there look like as well, since we're paying for that as well.
Yeah, and that is a great question. And one of the things that we have offered up in some of our jurisdictions has taken us up on it is a tour of the facility.
Financial, it's sufficient.
You know, the cost of, you know, or I guess in the past, the perception of, you know, digging a hole and putting garbage in and burying it is long gone, you know.
I'm aware that there's a lot more to it than that.
Yeah.
My question would be, you're showing a 7.9% bottom line on this operation. What's the bottom line on that operation?
With it being a separate entity, I'm on the hauling company's side. I don't have that information.
That's the number I'd like to see. Could I, I'd like to see the same kind of information on Coffin-Butte that we're seeing on this local operation.
Okay, okay. I can see if I can get that. Again, you know, it is owned by us, but it's completely separate.
I understand, but we're paying for it in a pretty big line item.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay.
Kevin, I have a question. In talking with the city manager, he was mentioning that you guys are going to start working towards some alternative fuel in your vehicles.
We are.
Is that cost benefit going to be passed down to us, the savings?
It will be to an extent. There is a large investment, a capital investment, to do that, you know, with the trucks being, you know, roughly $300,000. And then the infrastructure of having to put in a fueling station. But yeah, at some point, that will certainly be passed down to the customers. I mean, the fuel is much cheaper than diesel fuel. So, yeah, I mean, we will be seeing that savings. I guess one other quick thing I wanted to make, so those disposal costs doesn't necessarily represent just the landfill. It's our processing and recovery facility where we're taking our yard debris, our composting, and then also the recycling, the cost of transporting and taking that to market. So it's actually really three separate facilities in one line item.
It'd just be nice to understand a little better.
Okay, absolutely.
I have another question on recycling. I'm familiar with Marion County's recycling program, and theirs is very robust, and they accept just about everything. One of the things that frustrates me is that when I'm recycling, I love to recycle, and when I'm recycling, all of the styrofoam goes in the trash, and that goes in the landfill. And there's no alternative for it. So, is there any kind of an option that we can do some kind of a styrofoam recycling? Or recycling for other items that aren't accepted in the, because there's a lot of stuff that we just throw in the trash that you say we need to just throw in the trash.
So, one of the things that I do is, I have in the past, I've worked with the recycling program and actually taught the master recycler program for Lynn and Benton Counties for about five years. And, you want me to use this one? We, styrofoam is one of those things, this is what I really tell people, stop buying it, stop using it, we need to stop making it. Because while there are programs to recycle styrofoam there in Portland, and if you think of styrofoam, I tell kids it's like a plastic cheetah. It's mostly air, little bit of plastic. So hauling an entire truckload of styrofoam to Portland doesn't yield much actual plastic. There's a lot of controversy over whether the fuel and the resources required to get it to a recycler even benefit, if there's a net loss in benefit for recycling styrofoam. So it's a really tough product. We know if it goes in the landfill in a million years, it'll still be a styrofoam cup. That's the other problem with it. So it's a bad product environmentally, and it's difficult to recycle. In the time that we've been here, that I've worked for the company about eight years, there've been about three styrofoam recyclers go out of business. So there are times when nobody can take it. It's a problem. And it's not one that there's a good environmental solution for right now.
And another question, again, this is maybe a naive question, but the bags that we get at the grocery store that have the little recyclable symbols on them, we can't recycle those. Is there a reason for that?
There is. Our recycling, and I'd be happy to bring some videos and show you the process they go through, but it's a very mechanized facility where all the recycling is sorted because that big cart full of mixed stuff can't be recycled into anything. It all has to be sorted into light commodities. And so, it's very mechanized. They spend a couple hours a day cutting plastic bags out of the machinery, stopping, cutting plastic bags out, and then starting back up again, even though we ask people not to put it in and all the other folks who bring stuff to them ask not to put it in. So it just can't go into that process. But it can easily go to the grocery store or a depot where those are collected, and they just have to be source separated and can't go in the cart.
Okay. That's all I have.
Kevin, just to clarify, under the May 2012 agreement, if the council takes no action today, it's essentially approving the rates that you're proposing, and you're going to be able to notify your customers of that increase for next year?
Yeah, correct. So basically, it's approving the calculation of the rates and then approving the rate packet that we have in front of you today. We will notify customers, I think we have in there that we will notify customers within 30 days.
Again, under that prior agreement, and I haven't seen that prior agreement, council doesn't have to take action to do that. They only can disapprove your proposed rates. Is that correct?
Correct.
So just to clarify, that would mean that no action essentially means you're approving the rates, the formula and the numbers presented to you under the prior agreement from May of 2012.
Any other questions?
These new rates, if we take no action, will become effective when?
January. January 1st of 2014.
Until we have, until January, we have until the end of the year to make an action? Do you need an action sooner than that?
No, we need an action so we can notify customers. So when we were in here in May of 2012, the council had approved this rate methodology going forward. So it was approved at that time that this would be an annual increase based on the calculations being correct. It was somebody reviewing that. So the methodology of the annual increase has already been approved in the past. It would be just a matter of making sure that the calculations are correct and you agree upon those.
Yeah, I don't have any real core with what I'm seeing as far as the methodology. I think that looks like a sound methodology, from what I can tell. I would like to get some of this additional information just so I have a sense of where the big numbers are before we say go. That'd be my sense.
Is there a target date for collecting above ground more frequent?
Collecting, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Above ground? Debris, grass?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that is why we put this last paragraph in here. I mean, we would be glad to offer that service, collecting that on a weekly basis. Is that what we're talking about, more frequent? That is jurisdiction, depending upon what the jurisdictions want. I mean, if that is something you're asking us to do, we would love to bring you a proposal and, you know, a rate for adding that service. Absolutely. We have offered, you know, we have offered that in the past to some of our jurisdictions, and at that time, you know, that was just a service that they didn't want to add.
And you don't have a mechanism for people, individual households, to opt in or out of, I want weekly, I want buy weekly?
We don't, just because of the cost of that, what that would cost to run another truck separately.
Any other questions?
So our inaction today, we do nothing. You move forward and you start with your notification of...
Yes, that is correct. And that is what was passed, what was passed last year.
Right, okay.
Going forward.
But you do need to come to us every time?
We need, yes.
Just to notify us?
Absolutely.
To do nothing?
We will be in here every year, showing you the financials, showing you the calculations, showing our new rates. Absolutely.
How much time do you need to notify your customer base? You start that like this next week?
We will. We need to, because we have a bimonthly cycle, so we will need to notify customers the 1st of November and then other customers in December for the 1st of, to be effective January.
I'm good doing nothing and having you escort Barry through your facilities at a future date.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I don't want to go to Coffin-Butte. I've been there enough.
On page 17 of the proposal, you have a statement in there that says the calculations shall be provided to the city in September 1st, 2013. And did we receive those on?
We did, yes.
That's the 30 days, and so the 30 days would technically run until October 1st?
Yes, I dropped these off the first part of September.
Okay.
For your review and then for us to get in here, typically sometime in October for this discussion.
And my memory of the way that this works is, basically, we've approved, that this council has approved of the rate increases every year based on the calculations.
Yes.
And we can only object to that based on a error in the calculations. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, I mean, I guess my advice to council is, is that unless there is a motion based on an error in the calculations, that no action today simply approves what we've previously, the council has previously approved, which is the modification of the rates based on the index that they provided. So no action today provides them the go-ahead to proceed pursuant to the agreement that we've already made with them back in 2012.
You know, I'm good with that. I don't think it's probably a big enough deal to try to hold this up. I would like to, like, say, have an opportunity to review these numbers over the next couple months and maybe possibly, based on that review, look at this one more time next year. But I don't see any reason to hold it up at this stage.
Okay, great. And I'll stay in touch with Kevin and we'll get that information for you, Counselor Scott. And all the councillors will provide that to you.
Okay. Any other concerns from councillors? Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin and Brenda. Appreciate it.
So, just real briefly.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
I have, noting that for everyone, maybe you want to share, and we just, this is kind of the happy, touchy-feely part where we talk about all the great things that have happened in 2012. I will tell you that I just this week got the recovery rate, which is how we calculate what's been recycled and reused and composted and all those things for Lynn County. And we are again above 50%. I believe it's 51% for 2012. DEQ is always a year behind. But that's great. I will tell you that Benton County is at 46%. That makes you feel better. Yay! They have a hard time with that, let me tell you. So I just want to briefly let you know some of the highlights of 2012. And one is that we held our second household hazardous waste event in Lebanon. That was something that Lynn County and I think the folks in Lebanon were asking for, and so that has been a big success. We've begun to collect food scraps from the Lebanon Hospital. They are really into that, and they know that we have this program where we're composting food waste. So that's happening. Working with Lebanon High School to certify them as a green school, which is a great program, helping them to reduce waste at the school and find ways to reduce waste and possibly cost as well. And then we have our annual spring recycle event here in Lebanon, our recycle roundup. The next page just real quickly shows our efficiencies, and so what it shows you is that we are hauling our industrial hauls in more hauls in fewer minutes. Oh, I see a typo, sorry on there. Commercial yards are being hauled, more commercial yards of waste are hauled each hour, and more residents are being picked up each hour. So while we focus on safety, that's our most important focus, we are also more efficient, and we're getting more done in less time. So it's important to us to continue to do that and keep rates down and work for the folks who we work for. And then Kevin says this is a really busy, a lot going on on the next page. And there is, but it just has some numbers, sort of how many customers we have in Lebanon, how many participate in recycling. So 97% of all of our residential customers participate in recycling in Lebanon. I think that's a really admirable number, and it gives you an idea how important that is to people. For 2011, the recovery rate was 55%. So we've gone down just a little bit, but the state goal is to be over 50, and we're over 50, which is just great. And what that tells you then is that the landfill rate was 45%, less than what was kept out of the landfill. And that is really a great thing. The tons recovered over here on the top right, 12,478 tons recovered, that is everything that was recycled for Lynn County. We don't really have a mechanism to separate Lebanon or Albany out of those, so those numbers always go in as a group. And then 10,428 tons were composted and converted to compost at our facility in Benton County.
Julie, is there a plan to expand the composting to residential?
You know, as Kevin said, that is one of those things, in order for us to offer food waste, we call it the food scrap program, and we're doing that, I think you probably wear in Corvallis and Salem and some other places. In order for us to expand that to Lebanon, which is, as Kevin said, we're happy to offer that, we have to go to every week. Instead of yard waste, we call it mixed organics now because it's yard waste with the food scraps. And we have to go to every week, and that's just simply to make neighbors happy because we don't want to have odors in the neighborhood. And if we went every other week, especially in the summer, that can be problematic. So that program has to become weekly at that point. I will tell you that in a survey we did in the Corvallis area, the single most requested program before we went to this was weekly yard debris. I think people, you know, you think you're not using it every week, but it leaves in the fall, and then I prune roses in the winter, and, you know, all those things happen. So it's a good program, and it's certainly one we'd be happy to offer in Lebanon.
And if you added food scraps to that, it kills me to be, you know, to not have that. And I'm not a gardener, so I would do nothing with it if I just did it myself. So it kills me to just throw that in the regular garbage. I would love to...
You know, and the really good news is, we've gotten to a point where the low-hanging fruit is taken care of. We're recycling paper and plastic and cardboard and those things. So now we're looking for those other products that are a little bit harder to work with, and food waste is one of those. We know that about 20% of what goes into landfills is organic in nature, and a lot of that is food. And so, yeah, I think there's a lot to be said about putting those into a compost facility and doing something beneficial with it.
What is your rough guess of what, how that would impact fee-wise to a residential customer? A dollar or $5? I mean, what is...
You know, I think we're probably around the $3 to $5 range. Again, that depends on the density of the area, how big, how many customers participate. But that would be something that, you know, if the council was looking at, that we could come back and give you a proposal on that. Timing on that would be, you know, probably, you know, the February, March, April time when people are starting to use their yard debris carts again, trying to get a rate like, a rate passed right now when, you know, people aren't using yard carts as much. But we could certainly come back, you know, maybe in Q1.
Do you have a mechanism to, say, this may be way out there, but to survey Lebanon residents, to say, if we could, if we went weekly and we included food scraps, would that have enough value to you to increase your rates by X amount roughly? You know, I hate to increase people's rates. Obviously, it's a tough time, and that would be not necessarily very popular, but I would pay $3 more if I could do that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we could do a survey, we could work with the city of Lebanon, and we could figure out a way to get a survey out to our customers. And you're right, and see if that's something they'd be interested in.
I would love to see that. I don't know about anybody else.
I think a survey makes a lot of sense.
I would support a survey.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll certainly, I mean, just for the pure fact that, I mean, even in the summertime, you can just put your yard cart out weekly.
Right.
Just for that reason.
My husband gets really cranky.
Well, and I think you're right. We all think it would be a really great idea to compost, but not everybody has time or the inclination to do that. And this make, it's just like recycling. This just makes it easy and it comes to the curb. So we like that program. The next page just shows you a sampling of how many tons of different materials were collected in Lynn County. And that is pretty much it, other than just to say that we appreciate the opportunity to come in. One of the things we really like about this refuse rate methodology is that we don't come every three years just asking for a handout. We come in and we can talk to you about the possibility of a survey or, you know, just find out what else you're thinking about. And I wanted to mention about CNG trucks too, because we are putting a fueling station in our Corvallis facility, and we have trucks coming in the first quarter of 2014. And we know that that's something that will move this direction. We just want to congratulate you on that, the new alternative transportation center. It is a great program, and we, one that we hope to take advantage of the graduates from with those new trucks and with those technologies coming to our company too.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Thank you both.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Any items from council? Any items from council? Okay, seeing none, we have one last opportunity for public comments. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and we'll move into the work session. Okay. And our first up will be the water and wastewater utility update by Ron.
I forgot to give you these earlier. These are just kind of pictures of the slides. There you go.
Just the styrofoam. Thank you.
Sorry.
I appreciate you printing those out. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Back there.
I do have eyes in the back of the head, but not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We're here today to kind of give you an update on where we're at with the water treatment plant process. In other words, trying to get a new treatment plant design started. Can you click it into the, there we go. Okay, so what we intend to cover with you is the background, basically how we got to where we are right now, project funding, what our funding picture looks like based on where we're at with rates right now, what we perceive to be the direction we're headed. Looking at the O&amp;M costs, what the operations and maintenance costs are going to be for the new plant, some options that there may be there, give you an idea of the subconsultants that Corolla Engineering has proposed for this project. And go through a summary, basic summary with you, and then hopefully questions and answers. And keep it informal, any questions you got, just hit me with them and we'll, we'll work through that with you. And the idea is just to kind of give you an update on where we're at, so. With that, we had consensus at the August 14th meeting from council as to start negotiations with Corolla Engineering. Staff has been very involved with the development of the scope of the project. We went through and we've had multiple meetings with Corolla to, you know, go over size, various things, utilities, what we want to locate, what we want them to look at doing, all the different options there. The initial scope and fee that was based on our input, basically our input and with Corolla guiding that, didn't fit within the current funding scheme that we have right now. And the rate structure that we have right now, that means not implementing the next 15% rate increase. So we're trying to keep it in this box right now of that 3.15% rate increase with the possibility of some smaller inflationary going through. If that's what we're really looking at, that's why we're, we're going back and forth and negotiating with Corolla, trying to find a plant that fits within that framework as opposed to just saying, well, the original thought process was to do 4.15% rate increases. We're trying to see if we can do the project within the 3.15s that we have right now and make that happen. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we're at with them. Whether we can or can't remains to be unseen. You know, there may be some decisions we have to make and I'll move through that as we, as we go. But, so we've asked that they come back to us. And one of the things that we're doing with them is to look at, look at different scoping items that they can bring down. Also, we have developed a, a small contract with Corolla, I guess is the best way to put it, to take out some of the uncertainties. Some of the uncertainties that we don't know right now are the geotech work. How much excavation are we going to need to do for footings and, you know, is the material good? Utilities, while we know we've got at least 4,000 to 5,000 feet of water line, big diameter water line to install in order to connect our new plant to our existing system, what are the impacts throughout the rest of the system? I mean, are we going to have to upsize a pipe on Vaughan Lane or, you know, are we going to have to upsize a pipe up north of town somewhere just to maintain pressures, system pressures? And the model will know that. So that's another thing that they're working on for us right now under this small contract. You know, and then, like I said, the structural fill, they're working through that process. And then the pre-treatment process a little bit. And then, once we have some of those bigger questions, at least an idea of what the answer is, then we can develop a scope that hopefully fits within the percentages that we have right now. That's the idea, is to keep it there. So without doing that, there's so many unknowns that what you end up getting is tagged on with a pretty big contingency to your project. And, you know, likely we would do the same as staff, you know, not knowing what is out there and what we're going to build. You have to account for those. So at some point, you know, after we do negotiate down the contract and get to where we fit, we're either A, going to fit within this framework, or B, have to make some pretty serious decisions. Some of those are going to include, you know, the size of the initial plant. I think one of the things that we're hoping to accomplish with this is to get a 6 MGD plant out of this right now, initially. Now, we don't need 6 million gallons today, but we want to be, I guess for lack of a better term, shelf-ready to have 6 million gallons right now. That means all the plumbing fixtures and whatnot in, maybe not as many filters in place, because likely the plant would run a little more efficiently at 4 MGD right now. But we still want to be capable 6 MGD right now. I think that's important to go there. So that's a decision that's going to have to be made if we can't get there within that funding mechanism that we have in place right now. You know, future growth, which ties right back into that, design of the building, you know, there's several different building designs. We could be real basic, I'll call it a hanger-style building, basically look like a shop. Or we can go with a pre-engineered building. Both of those, the cost differences are pretty substantial. The O&amp;M pieces to both of those is pretty substantial. One of the things with an engineered building, you can put a crane system in that helps pull pumps and, you know, makes the ease of operations, you know. So there's a different, different things that you can do with the different types of buildings. So that's another thing that we're having Corolla look at in this minor contract that we have with them. And then future regulations, you know, we've got to have adequate room and think through what the future regulations are going to be. You know, the regulatory agencies rarely don't make any more regulations, you know. So I mean, obviously, we're going to be, you know, what are we treating for next, you know? So we have to kind of think through some of that stuff. And it all impacts the price of the project, you know. So we're trying to take some of the unknowns out of that.
Ron?
Yes, ma'am.
When you're looking at architecture of buildings.
Yes.
I think it's important, and I'm sure you're cognizant of this or aware, or, but I would think it would be a priority, which building would last longest. I would hate for us to, as a council, to cut.
Absolutely.
Cut now and 30 years from now, not having had the foresight to have a, you know, that our, you know, my kid is now having to face this same conversation because we didn't have, we didn't have a good enough.
Right.
Long-term plan.
And that's, and that's where the decision-making from, from this body is going to have to come into play. Our hope is that we can, we can come in, build this plant within the framework of the dollars that we have now. I mean, that's, that's the ideal situation and that's what we're really working hard to pin these costs down so that we know if we can do it. Because the last thing we want to do is either A, tell you we can't do it and turns out we could have, or B, tell you we can do it and get to the construction bidding process and go, we can't do it. So we're really trying to narrow those costs down right now, you know. And that's, that's, that's hard to do with a project this size. You know, especially with some of the unknowns. But the building, you know, that is a good point. And that's another decision that, you know, this body can definitely make. We'll give you the pros and cons of both of those, you know. I mean, like I said, they both have their own M, you know, some, some things are, you know, we can build a pretty basic building out there and, yeah, it looks all right, you know. Or we can do a little bit nicer building. Obviously, we're not looking at the Taj Mahal-type building. We're looking at something functional. But there's functional and then there's down here, you know. So we'll look at that. And that's definitely something we're taking a look at. So back to unknowns. The intake design, that's another big one. Right now Albany's under the FERC regulation, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. That's changed the status on the canal a little bit. With them running their hydro plant, they come under new regulations, one of which is, you know, we're a sole source, our water is sole sourced off the Albany Canal. So this FERC committee determines that it puts Albany in a higher class. So what does that mean? I don't really know, but I think, you know, we could be looking at a, a little more substantial intake than we were originally thinking as staff, you know. I mean, what we'd really like to do is a box covert design that pipes it over to our side with some pretty basic stuff out there. Whether we're going to be able to do that with Albany or not, obviously, we'll have to wait and see. So there's, there's more costs there that we don't know the answers to. Geotechnical, that's coming soon. Connecting water lines, I think, you know, once we run the model, we'll have a little bit better handle. Your building type, we've kind of covered that. Pre-treatment, right now, we're looking at this and we're thinking that we don't have a whole lot of need for pre-treatment. That being said, we won't know the exact answer to that until all the water chemistry is taken into account with the membrane suppliers that we actually work with and whether we need to pre-treat upfront. Our initial stab at it is no, we don't, which is a good thing. You know, if anything, it'd be very minor. It's not like we need to build another treatment process on the front end of our plant prior to going to the filters. Let's see. And then obviously I threw in there, need for additional treatment to meet future regulations. What's that look like? I mean, a couple of things we're looking at, we want to leave room in the plant for UV disinfection for, you know, things that come up. And we're not necessarily going to put it in right now, but we definitely need to leave room. Not a big thing. Pre-treatment, if they change the pre-treatment rules on us, we want to make sure we leave enough room upfront in the plant to where we can accommodate something to cover that so that it's not a complete redo on the plant. So there's a lot of things to look at there.
Is that, is that kind of thing, does that primarily just matter making the building a little bit bigger or?
Yeah, and, or having it thought through to where you can add something. It doesn't necessarily have to be in that building. It could be in a separate building, but just something, some way.
Somewhere in the flow.
Yes, somewhere in the flow, somewhere in the process that we can do that.
But primarily physical space to allow.
Absolutely. And we start allowing that physical space, some of it obviously in the building. Your building grows, you know. You don't want to just make a small box and hope that everything fits in it. At the end of the day.
But it's not, we're not talking like major new valving. Is there, is a contingency valve or something like that or something?
Well, it could be, yeah. I mean, those regulations, what are they? What are they in the future? You know, I mean, we don't know. I mean, there's talk of treating for, like your, your prescription drugs, you know, out of rivers, you know. How, what's that process look like? You know, whether we get there or not, I don't know. But these are the things that we need to look at as we size the building, so that it's not just set like this, so that we can actually put more process in it if we need to. And it's expandable.
Were we originally, when we set out on, you know, the talking of the new facility, wasn't the target like 8 million gallons?
Yes, 6 to 8, 6 to 8. So, so I think we had, we've had multiple meetings. Seems like we meet on this all the time and are going through the numbers. What, ideally, what we would look at right now, I think if we had a perfect world and everything, the stars and the moon align, which we're hoping they do, we get enough filters in our plant to run 4 million gallons right now. But the racks, and I'll have to bring some pictures and show you, the racks are set for 6 to where all we've got to do is screw canisters on and we've got 6 million gallons right there, ready to go. And then you leave ample room to bring another skid in to get you to 8 million gallons. But if you start reading through the master plan and looking at our growth rates, and it's probably, if you stayed on the same growth pattern we are today, I mean, it might be 40, 50 years before we need that 8 million.
But wouldn't it be true to say if we went, we had a growth spurt pre-2008, from everything I'd heard 10 years prior, that was a very unanticipated growth spurt and it was fairly significant?
Yep.
If that were to happen again, we would meet those numbers very quickly, I would think.
Probably not.
Well, another question I have, this, this facility will have duplicity in it.
Yes.
Okay. So if half the plant went down in a 6 million gallon, would, we would have approximately 3 million gallon capacity? Or is it that simplistic?
Depends on which process went down. I think what these are, and it's hard to picture, their, their filter, I call them skids, but basically they're, and you can array them however you want, but they're going to be, let's say for our purposes, they're going to be in increments of 2 million gallons per skid. And what they are is individual filters that can, you can put enough in for 2 million gallons capacity for each of those. Or you can alternate and maybe you have 1. whatever million gallons, which is what we're proposing for three of them, so that we could jump to 6 real easy. And then you would have all your piping headed off so that you could jump to 8, but you wouldn't necessarily need to put the skids in. Our thought on that, after reading through this stuff, the turnover rate on the, on the filter, on the membranes themselves is about a 10-year life cycle. So to put that additional 8 in, we will have the room for 8, but we wouldn't necessarily put that in right now as a capital cost because we would just be replacing it without even, even using it. So it would just, it would be fitted that way. Now, that's what we're shooting for. Should we do something different than that, obviously this body's going to need to make a decision.
Well, part of what I'm getting at is, we have seen 4 million gallon days.
Mm-hmm.
And I just was trying to get a picture of how close, you know, it makes me uncomfortable being too close to our present demand without thinking a little further ahead.
Yeah.
That's all.
So a couple of things that hopefully we're doing that will alleviate some of that, that worry, which, which has been a worry for us. We're putting 4 million gallons of storage on South Fist Street. So we've increased our storage capacity by 2 million gallons, which there, that in and of itself, hopefully we don't have to run the plant even on a peak day. Right now, our peak day is 3.5, 3.8, or a three-day max day, you know, is about 3.8. Well, we should have enough storage with the 6 million gallons that we've got to not have to run the plant that hard. You know, we can catch it up a little bit slower. Now, if you've got 4 million gallons set there with the amount of storage that we've got, you know, it's, you should, you should have ample, ample filter room to do that. Now, let's say that we got in a situation where all of a sudden we were seeing, you know, global warming actually hits and we're doing 4.5 million gallons a day for our peak days. That's why we want to be set to 6, so that we can call up whoever our membrane manufacturer is and say, hey, I need some more filter units. They ship them to you, you screw them on, and all of a sudden you're making 6 million gallons. Your, your plant capacity has grown to that. That's the idea, is to have that be in place. And they'll be on skids. So back to your question about is there redundancy? Yes. So I can take one skid offline and still have potentially 4 million gallons capacity.
And you would physically have space in the building. I think I just heard you say to go to 8.
Yes, that's our goal. That is our goal. And that's, you know, we're, like I said, we're putting this, all in this box of, can we do what I'm talking to you about right now in the rate structure that we have? And that's, that's what we're shooting for. So.
So Ron, just want to make sure I'm understanding how this plant. So Ron, just want to make sure I'm understanding how this plant works. As I understand it, the gist of this is we've got infrastructure, you know, pipes is up going to the site.
Yep.
Utilities going to and from the site. We've got a physical building, we've got an intake off the canal, and inside the building, connected with some sort of manifold, are these skids of filtration units.
Correct.
So that's, so the skids are the filtration units, the treatment units.
Yes. You've got to go through a pre-screening and some stuff like that, but yes.
But generally, so, you know, if we had an extra skid sitting in the warehouse, you know, if one skid for some reason blows up, we stick a skid in and replace it if we'd had to or something?
Yeah, you would call your manufacturer and get one, yes.
Okay.
With some mechanical plumbing, but yeah, that's essentially.
Yeah, but once we've done, once we've done the infrastructure, getting stuff to the site, getting the site built, the actual filtration capacity is relatively updatable.
I would say we're shooting to be updatable to 8 million gallons. I think once you get past 8 million gallons, I think your infrastructure within your distribution system.
Then the infrastructure itself starts to become a different issue.
You're talking a whole new ball of wax at that point. And our thoughts on that, unless you have just a humongous growth spurt, that's a long ways off.
Not even, I'll probably be dead before we need 8. I got to imagine.
Well, I hope not.
Well, it could be. I mean, you guys, well.
Okay, so that's kind of the unknowns. I mean, there's a lot more unknowns than that, but this, it kind of gives you a snapshot of what's going on. Next thing, and I think we've kind of touched on it, is the project funding. In 2000, it says 2007, but that master plan was actually completed in 2009. We had a cost estimate of about $25.5 million, which included a 30% contingency. Okay, that included the engineering price, that's in the master plan. Also included a onsite at-grade reservoir and some other things. So paring that all down, you know, we've had probably six years of inflation, close to six years of inflation. We've got three of our four 15% increases that we've implemented in order to do this piece of capital. So we're tight. We're, it's going to be tight. I think right now, we won't know the answer to that until we get some information from this preliminary, preliminary stuff back from Corolla. And once we know that, why then, we can look at it and we can have more discussion if necessary at that point.
What's your timeframe, do you think, that you'll know more?
We got the scope and the small contract that we're doing with Corolla back today. I have staff back at the office right now at Development and Engineers Services.
So this afternoon?
Yes, and, yeah, well, we'll get it to them. They intend to have a work session with us like December 4th, so something like that. And then we would be looking at December 20th for final, so we'd have some ideas. And then, you know, the big contract with them for the design would probably be January, February.
I'm significantly worried about, you know, we talked, we debated long and hard about whether we would rate increase last July.
Right.
And until we had more information, I wasn't comfortable. And Wayne argued for at least a 5, 8% just in case, so that if we did have to do the second 15, then it was only another 7. And that was a compelling argument, and I'm, it's going to break my heart to be wrong on that.
I still, I still think it was probably the wise decision by council to do that, because to be honest with you, I can't sit in front of you and tell you I need it if I don't know I don't need it. And we need to, we need to work this stuff out so that we know those costs. I think that's, I think that what you did was fair, and that's what it should have been, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. I don't think it's going to come to the 15%. I think we're going to be able to do it under that. You know, at a minimum, you can see what I put in there, we're proposing right now that we'll probably be looking at a minimum of a 3% over the next two years, and that inflationary. You just heard it from basically the Allied Waste people as well. You know, they're trying to keep up with their inflationary costs. That 3% has nothing tied to it other than what we looked at as, you know, how do we maintain our capital program? You've got another $67 million worth of infrastructure out there that, and that's not, that's not a bloated number. We've actually sat and looked at these numbers for lines that need to be replaced that we're having issues with, and we've said, well, how do we get there over the next 10 to 15 years? And our goal is to have $400,000 to $500,000 left over after we've paid the debt service on this new treatment plant, so that we can start tackling those. Plus, you've got another reservoir on Grant Street that's going to need to be replaced, at least seismically updated at some point. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at. You know, and how we're defining where we're at financially right now, Rob and Jason and I and Mike Trippit have spent hours writing this stuff on the board and going through different scenarios and how this works. And basically, what we came down to is, you know, we have to have the ability to pay our debt service. We have to have the ability to cover our fixed costs, staff, O&amp;M, you know, just your everyday costs and what those are. And we've got to be able to maintain our system that we have, and we've got to have a capital program at the end of the day. What we don't want to do is try and do this in the funding that we have and in three years tell you, you've got $3 million worth of water lines that just failed. Guess what? We need a 20% rate increase now to cover those. So we're trying to weave and dodge and make all this work within what we have here without having to go, to go back to the rate payers to get more money. What would be nice is to have a nice steady increase, and then if you did miss a year, it's probably not that big a deal. But I think from now, what we're looking at is definitely the next two years.
Ron, what kind of methodology you guys use to project costs of these projects?
Ah.
Do they differ, or do your methodologies differ from a major project like a water treatment plant or a reservoir as opposed to your water lines?
In terms of...
You just look back and say, over the last 10 years, we paid this amount for contract to do, you know, X amount per foot or per mile to put water lines in, and it's just strapped like that way? How do you actually do that?
We keep it daily, I mean, daily, I say daily. You know, we take all of our current cost trends and we keep those and we move them forward. So you add a percentage, you add, you know, 2.5% for inflation per year, some years that, you know, you look at, so you move it forward that way?
I know a number of years ago, City Lebanon had a small water line replacement team. And I know that if the data that I've been given or been told about is accurate, that that team was running water lines up to, what, 6, 8-inch kind of diameters?
Yeah.
In that ballpark? And what I understand is that that team was able to beat contracted-type construction costs on those water lines by in the 30% to 40% range. And that was, you know, I'd like to, I've been told that that data exists there at the city in some historical fashion, but...
Is it 30% to 40%?
And I, I mean, I can share with you where I got that sometime, but, and somehow, you know, I've got reasonably, that's probably not inaccurate, because I've seen other projects that have that similar kind of performance. And so I'm just curious what we could, for one, I'd like to look back and just find out if that's really true. I mean, I don't want to sit here and make a big conversation about something that's not true.
Sure.
But, you know, I have been told that from a reliable source, that that was about the numbers we were running, and, you know, and over about a five-year period, as I understand it, that that team was in place.
We used to do the designs for the small water line crew. As far as costs, they ran their own costs, you know? That came out of, Rod Salam ran most of that program. So, so take yourself back to this number right here, the $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That's basically what that, that small diameter water line crew had, was $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That covered staff, that covered equipment acquisitions and materials. They did probably, I'd say, 4, 3,000 to 4,000 feet a year, basically, of small diameter pipe. Water line, it's probably comparable. You know, you get a contractor, can we beat a contractor installing water line? Yeah, probably, probably. But you have to look at it in this sense. If you hire staff and you hire, let's say, for instance, I go out and hire four staff, and I'd need to definitely do the math on this, but if I hired four staff, I would need to make sure that I kept those staff busy and I had enough work to keep that staff busy.
No, I understand that concept as well.
All day.
But if you look at our capital improvement project for just treated water, and, you know, you can probably give me more accurate numbers, but if I remember correctly from the plan I read, the master plan, over the next, and I forget the life of that plan, but I'm thinking it's like, what, 10 or 15 years from now is what the plan projects to? I think the number for capital improvement projects was in the neighborhood of $44 million for treated water. And of that number, that includes the treatment plant and some other big projects.
Sure.
So I'm thinking in terms of water lines themselves of up to X number size, not just small, but, you know, I was in the impression, you know, roughly 2/3 of that number, you know, half to 2/3 of that number was for water lines and stuff, as opposed to major projects.
Probably.
And if that's true, and if the people I've talked to that were involved with that project, I asked the question, I said, you guys are doing small lines, I said, could you guys handle big lines? Well, if we had some, a little bit bigger equipment, some bigger shoring, a few other things like that, yeah. And if there's a 30% number there, well, we're talking some numbers that are worth at least exploring.
Yeah, and we can do that. I mean, ORSes, ORSes will dictate what we can and can't do. I think we can do our own work up to $125,000 before we have to go to, and Trey, we'd have to look at this on what it is. I mean, I'd have to go back through the ORSes and see.
Well, yeah, I'm not missing making a recommendation today, I'm saying, I'm just asking to maybe have a conversation.
And actually, Dana and I and Jason have talked about it. Some, you know, we haven't really sat down, to be honest with you, and put any numbers to it, you know? So that's definitely something that we could, we could take a look at. You know, you've got to factor in equipment costs, all that stuff.
But, you know, if you're talking $20 million over 15 years, the equipment costs will start to get pretty affordable.
Yeah.
If the numbers that I've been given are not far off.
No, I think it was a fair program. That program was disbanded. I remember when we did it, basically looking at future needs being large diameter and the treatment plant. And we've got to collect all of our capital that we can collect right now and start putting it in that direction. That was the mindset at that point. And I think it still is at this point, you know? I mean, we need to, we need to, I mean, there's a lot of little lines that need to be addressed as well, but right now, our focus is primarily on that treatment plant and some of our big diameter stuff and fixing.
When you say big diameter, give me a...
12 to 16, 12 to 16-inch.
Mm-hmm.
Versus an 8.
Right.
Versus 6.
Now, what's the equipment requirement difference for doing that in the same fashion? It's primarily an equipment as opposed to skill level, right?
I mean, I think, I think we've got the equipment internally to do that. We've got our own excavator, we've got backhoes. I believe they did all that with a backhoe, but that was a smaller. I don't know if you'd do 12-inch with a backhoe.
Yeah, we'd use an excavator now and we have a wheel loader, so we're set up for the projects and we do, we do find ourselves doing some of these projects to help things along. I think we're looking at doing that even with the plant, some aspects of that.
I guess my basic take, without making a proposal, but what I've observed of certain city staff departments, you guys and others, is you guys have capabilities way beyond what some of the things we ask of you. And I just think, you know, okay.
Well, we're actually doing them, you know? I mean, we did the Filbert Street water line, we've done a lot of storm sewer replacements with our guys, you know, because there's, it's not a big capital area. We've done street repairs, huge street digouts. And like Jason said, we're looking at, with the geotechnical end of this, if, let's say for some reason a geotechnical came back and said, you've got to overexcavate 6 feet for your building pad, we talked and we would do that internally, because that's a huge cost to have that contracted and hauled off, you know, where we could do it as time allowed and got it done. So I think we are doing some of that. It may not be as known, maybe, I guess, would be the way to put it. But we don't have a, well, look at the park, Christopher Columbus Park, same thing. Two years ago, we would have probably contracted that out, you know, whereas we had our guys in there with graders and cats and excavators and dump trucks and getting that project done, so. I think we are doing that to a degree. The question I think you have is, is it cheaper to take on more of that?
I think it's worth exploring. I mean, I understand, you know, tackling something like a water treatment plant is probably not something you want to do that way.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we would. I think we could do pieces of it.
Some of the, some of the utilities to the, some of the excavation onsite, some of the landscaping, things that...
I just think it might be worth taking a good hard look. You know, we're discussing treated water this morning, where you also got wastewater, you've got storm sewer, you've got a variety of things. You've got street surfacing, you've got a variety of things that a related set of capabilities could tackle.
Yeah.
And that, you know, might just be worth taking a good hard look at that across the board.
We can tune to.
Would we have the ability to do that, or would we have the manpower to do that without sacrificing other services in the maintenance department or the, I mean, is that, that seems like a manpower intensity?
We're currently staffed. Something's got to stop while we're doing, doing those additional duties.
Well, but if you're going to tack, it's just, you have to look at the whole thing in broad scope. You may want to upgrade your manpower level at some level, but again, I'm not ready to suggest this is what we do. I think, I'm asking for just some conversation and exploration.
To this point...
I'm not ready to make a recommendation by a long shot.
To this point, we've been able to absorb it and just keep shuffling things down the line and piling more on the crews. They've responded to that. At some point, there's a...
They're going to stop responding?
Oh, they'll respond.
Oh, they'll respond, yes.
It'll just be a different response.
I think Council Scott, just part of your, part of your issue is, Ron and Jason have been challenged to evaluate that, and we're going to look at that. Right now, however, a lot of our capital is being kind of saved and we're scrimping to ensure that we can try to hold the rates and put as much of that capital towards the water treatment plant, so that we can keep those water rates down. Once that plant is done and we know exactly where that is, and some of that capital is freed up to start doing the projects again, I think that issue becomes much more relevant. But hopefully, we'll have the answers before that happens.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's basically exactly what we're looking at, so. Moving on, operations and management. So one of the things that we asked for Corolla to do was to determine the O&amp;M costs of this new treatment plant. What's it going to take to operate, maintain this new treatment plant? Is the most cost-effective way with city staff, or is the most cost-effective way with our current contractor? What is that? Tell us what you think there. And so they're working through that process, and when we get a contract with them, that'll be one of the big pieces in the scope. And I just want to let you know that that is something that we are looking at. I think it's more us looking at, not that our current contractor doesn't do a great job, but I think it'd be prudent for us to always keep that in the back of our head, you know? What is the best, you know? So a couple of other things we're looking at for operations, alternate power, whether it's effective or not, you know, different types of building, green building, that type of stuff. So those all will be looked at as well when we get to that point. Subconsultants, I stuck this section in there just basically to give everybody an idea that Corolla kind of stuck to their word with who they actually went and selected to do all of the subconsulting work. And that's UDL Engineering, Irwin Consulting Engineers, Foundation Engineering, and Crawford Land Service. So every private business that we have that's in engineer and land surveying here in town has gotten a piece of this work too. So we were pretty happy that they stuck with that, and that, they did that on their own. We did not dictate that as staff. They did that on their own, so, should be noted. And then I guess the summary, you know, and we've kind of beat it up a little bit, trying to define a scope that fits within our existing funding and doesn't sacrifice our quality capacity or our operations and maintenance. I think that's the number one takeaway from this is, there may come a point when we say, well, we can't get what we want with the funding mechanism that we have in place right now, and we may have to come back to this body and say, well, we need X percentage in order to move this thing forward. And I guess to keep in mind, we're, we're, original costs were 25 million, you know, and that was, that was four to six years ago. And then now we're looking at 75% of the initial rates that were looked at for funding this capital project. So keep that in mind as we're going through this. It's important to us, though, as staff, that we try and do this. That's one of the goals that we've set. that we've set, actually as Public Works Department, is we're just going to keep banging on it until we get it to where we want it, you know, and we're hoping that we get it there so that we don't, we don't have to come back with that existing rate increase, or that additional rate increase. But again, we'll probably propose a minimum 3% next year, and a 3% over the following year, that's a minimum, so keep those as a minimum. I think if there's anything more than that, we'd definitely have a pretty good discussion about it, you know, prior to, we'll definitely do another work session when we get a contract back that we can use.
We talked about initially, an increase every year anyway.
Correct.
So the 3% you're saying we're probably going to need the next two years is on top of?
No.
Just a 3%?
I'm just saying, please, look at doing the inflationary, we did not this year.
Right.
And there was a reason we didn't, and I basically told you that with the staff reductions that we had, and who was staffed in water, and how that worked out, that we...
And until we knew more.
We reacted like a 3% inflationary, so we didn't lose anything this year. But what we're seeing at this point is, is, you know, whether that CPI next year is 2.3 or 2.1, probably at a minimum, we're looking at three for sure, you know, and maybe it's four, I don't know, in order to get us down that path so we get, we'll get that plant. But one of the other interesting things that I think we've talked about as staff is probably pushing out the construction of the water treatment plant maybe four to six months, and what that does is it allows us to capture another year's worth of cash from rates, which thus lowers your bond, your debt service. And that four to six months, if we can time it right, is not going to make a big deal, you know, one way or the other. I say that now, as long as the existing treatment plant doesn't crash, you know, but that's, that's one of the things we're looking at, and that will cut our debt service there again, so we're trying to factor that in as well, so.
Ron, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you, at some point, I don't need right this second or immediately, but could you get for us the maybe actual calculations that showed how we arrived at 25 and a half million, and the, you know, just the actual numbers as opposed to the end conclusions?
Yeah, they're in the, they're in the master plan, it's in the back, back here, yeah. What CHM Hill used for their, for their numbers, it's in the very back.
Okay, then I'll just take a look at that then.
Yeah, I could bring them to you, no problem.
Is that the same master plan you've given me before?
Yes, it is. It's the, it's the capital system improvements.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look at that.
One other question, anything else?
Other than that, some of us wanted this thing built already, but hey.
We could have done one 60% rate increase, I guess.
That was on the table.
I know it was, I know it was. No, I think, I think you've done right with the rates, I think that was the right move still. I know you, we may have to add to them a little bit, but until we know that dollar number, I don't think any of us as staff would feel right coming before this body and saying, "Just do 15," or "Just do 10," and not having a basis for that.
And even if, even if our next increase is 7 or 8%, I mean, I'm okay with that because we didn't do the 15 before we had enough information to make a, to make a, you know, a good decision on that. Eight, still hard to swallow, and still people are going to be ticked.
Yeah.
But if you can show exactly why we need it, then I'm, then I'm behind it.
That's, that's our...
Three, awesome.
Yeah, that's our goal.
Just to finalize, you know, council's aware that we've had this on the agenda a few times to actually try to finalize the contract, and Ron and his folks, we've sat down and said, you know, "We're not quite where we want to be with the numbers yet." And our goal is to build the best system we can that will serve the future needs of the city with as little ongoing cost while we can keep the rates fairly level into the future and build those capital reserves to replace and maintain that equipment down the line.
Exactly, because the whole thing is, we don't want to be in the position, you know, 50 years from now that we are in right now, because we didn't have the long-term foresight to just continue to build enough capital to be in a position, you know, this is going to, it's going to have a lifespan, 50 years from now, God only knows what DEQ is going to say, we, you know, we can only drink mist from the sky, or, you know, something.
Probably have to put it under a bubble or something.
Yeah, there's, good lord. So whatever we do today may be completely inadequate then.
Absolutely.
We have to plan for that.
Absolutely. Okay. And anybody that wants more information, I mean, we've got, I mean, come see us, set up, set up a time, we'd love to go through this with you in more depth than...
They're talking to you, Barry.
We could bore you to tears with it, if you want.
You already did.
Okay. My work here is done.
It gets worse. Actually, thank you for all you guys' hard work on this, I know it's a big project.
Well, we'll keep working at it, thank you.
Thanks. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll move on to the City Hall facilities. Okay, let's get started back with the work session. City Hall facilities, Dana, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. You know, I was greeted by what I can only assume was John Nelson's subtle hint to me that there were some issues when I arrived on the first day, and there was an instruction book to an earthquake monitor on the middle of my chair, and I started asking people, "What is, what is this?" Of all, you know, I'd heard about the rain and all this, and suddenly it was this earthquake issue. And people started talking about, "Oh yeah, you know, our building is going to collapse if there's an earthquake." And I started wondering and started looking, and I believe you were directed by Linda to some material on the internet, in particular referring to a 1994 study and a draft study done in 2012, and I believe Jamie brought you some hard copies, and essentially both of those studies, now covering a period of almost 19 years, have essentially said, "We have even a moderate seismic event, and our city hall is going to be rubble." That causes me some level of concern, and I've started to look at, what can we do, what really are our needs regarding city hall, and before I got too far, I wanted to make sure that I understood the pulse of council on what was important to them in a city hall, whether they even agreed that, "Yeah, we should probably look at what the options are," or if council was pretty much like, "Ah, we'll pull the dead bodies out of the rubble when it happens and worry about everything later."
Well, with the staff...
So that's kind of, kind of the discussion point now, and when and if we get to some of the options I've identified that really relate to specific locations and pros and cons, I think we would need to convene to executive session.
Yeah, I have to say, I'd heard some of the discussion from John Hitt back last year when we were talking about it, and I hadn't read the report until just, you know, a couple days ago, and I was, I was pretty shocked at how bad the buildings are, the different sizes, heights of the buildings altogether, the fact that they will all collapse on each other because of the different sizes, because there's essentially three buildings there, it's, it's pretty serious.
Well, if I remember correctly, it was in the late 90s, there was at least one day that the building was evacuated because of anticipated winds. That did indeed come through, but not quite as strong as they had expected, but there was reasonably back then that that was a threat.
Well, so what you're basically saying is that city hall's unsafe, therefore we need to do something about it in some fashion, make it safe for the folks that work there. And possibilities are fix it, you know, repair it, which is expensive, tear it down, get rid of it, and buy or build a new building, or farm staff out to other locations around the city, and maybe some other options I haven't thought of. That seems to be the basic picture, in other words, am I correct in hearing you that we don't feel like we have a lot of options as far as dealing with the problem in some form?
Well, ultimately, what I want to do is bring you back options, and that's when you'd actually have to make a decision. Today's just kind of work session to get your input, I don't want to bring options back that nobody has any interest in whatsoever. From my perspective, there are certain things that are important in a city hall, and that is there has to be a creation of a sense of community, a gathering place, a place where people think they can come and address their issues with the city, whether it be with the city council or with city staff. I know that this council has expressed concern about this facility as a city chambers. I think it's very quaint, but not necessarily the most accessible or the most fitting of a government body such as yourselves for citizens to feel comfortable coming in and addressing the council. Certainly, our current building isn't exactly comfortable for people to come into a fairly small waiting room, issues with potential security with completely open windows and things like that. So I don't know what's important to each of you relative to the kinds of things I should consider, if all you're really thinking is, you know, "We just need an austere rectangular building that serves a functional purpose," then I will look at certain types of options. If on the other hand, you're thinking that it should be something that is illustrative of the community values and open space and that feeling of community, then I think that there are other types of options that may or may not involve larger parcels of land or other locations. So really, I'm kind of looking for that guidance in just an open discussion here, and then, again, I'd like to go to executive session if the mayor's willing to discuss some specific locations that I've looked at that are potential options for expansion, should we choose to go that way.
I would like to see us, I would like to see us have something representative of our more recent, you know, the library and the senior center, the justice center. I think it should have, I think it should have a more accommodating facility for public meetings, and I think it should be something, you know, we have this momentum of people in Lebanon really feeling proud of Lebanon, and really feeling like we got it going on compared to most other communities in Oregon, and I think it should be representative of that.
Well, I completely concur with that sentiment, I really do. The idea that, I mean, if you look historically, communities have always been proud of their public edifices, you know, clear back day, Greece and Rome, it's, you know, to build an edifice that represents and promotes the community as an entity is a good thing, and so I concur with you. The other sentiment that comes out is that, you know, we need to keep in mind what it costs the citizens that live here to do this, I mean, ancient Greece bankrupt themselves building the Parthenon, and we don't want to do that, and so somehow we're going to strike a balance of those desires and, or be really creative and get them all accomplished. But, you know, we're trying to build a water treatment plant right now that we're struggling to figure out how to afford, and to tack on a city hall right now, at first blush sounds difficult, no, I'm not ready, so we can't figure out a way to do the impossible, so let's not, I'm not saying that, but let's keep in mind that we need to keep the cost of living in this community on the downward trend, not the upward trend.
I think if we could come to, if nothing else, if we could come to a consensus that status quo on city hall right now as it sits is not, I don't find it acceptable.
If it's life-threatening, that's clearly the case, it's not acceptable.
We have a reliability if we let it go too long, and we've known this for years.
Yeah, but, you know, we can solve any problem if we throw enough money at it.
Yeah.
So we've got to be careful with that as well.
Right, and that's a concern that I have, I don't want to see, when I read this report, I mean, this, both engineers basically are saying that it's just cost prohibitive to make this building workable. It really needs to be torn down and rebuilt or somewhere else, so I'm, I don't feel comfortable trying to fix this building.
Well, I really think even trying to build something else on that site and tear it down is really limited to the scope of where our city is growing, it's probably small already, so I agree with you, to throw money at that building, it served us well, I mean, it was a fire department for a while at a police station and at the city hall, et cetera. I think the section where the fire department was, I heard, used to be the old, they used to feed some of the horses or something, and there was like a stall part or something, it has served us well. So I would say, you know, to limit it down, I would, I would throw that in as retrofit or even using that site might be out of the question in my mind.
Okay.
I have a few things, as I jotted down here, I think the first thing you have to think about are the citizens that have to pay for it, like Barry said, and if they're going to pay for something, they need to support it, they're going to want to have to support it. Therefore, I think that the education of our citizens on the condition of this is of most importance. They need to know, and we need to shout it from the rooftops really, how, if it's this bad, and this looks bad, if it's that bad, then we need to let them know. That raises another question, which is what is our obligation as an employer for the people who, yourself included, who work in there on a day-in and day-out basis, if we have a known threat or a known safety issue like that, I mean, we won't let a guy get off of a truck without a safety vest on, but we're going to shuttle these people into this building for the next two to three years, knowing that one wind event could take it down, and we certainly get our share of those here. So what is that obligation? And if we're going to go look at this, and obviously we're not, we're not pulling this out of some line item in the budget somewhere, we're going to have to go to bond on this and find a funding source for it, what's that cost going to be, what, and then what other structures do we have right now that may be in the same boat? If that building is the same, the first one that popped in my head was the maintenance shop building down there, how, how stable is that? I know we've got a new justice center, we've got a new library, we've got a senior center that's old, but I'm assuming is in good shape, but I don't know that. What other structures do we have? I'm not sure, but, so is there potential to have to lump, lump another structure into this to make, so we don't fund a city hall and then turn around and two years later, "Oh, by the way, the maintenance shops are falling down, let's, let's go through this whole dog and pony show again." So I think if we, if we want to have the support of the citizens when it comes time to vote on this, we need to give them all the information that we have and present the best possible package for them, and then it's really up to them at that point, and then the alternative is up to you, so.
That's fair.
At one time, we looked at the telephone office, and I guess that's dead, isn't it? That we've kind of pulled away from that.
Is off the market.
We've got a couple of car dealership buildings in town that are empty, but there be any feasibility of doing anything with those?
I think we need to, that would be for executive session, that part, and then we'll go with the generalities now, and then if we need any specific locations.
So at least this, but what I'm hearing relative to consensus is, it's not, fixing current building isn't really an option per se.
That seems pretty clear.
Yeah.
That there has to be citizen support.
It'd probably cost you twice as much as what it would do to build something new.
Yeah, to me, the question is, is, you know, what do you, where do you put people next? And the question there is, you know, do you build something new, which brings all the funding issues up, or, you know, do we take existing facilities and start parsing people out as a stopgap? You know, somewhere on that spectrum is probably the answer, but getting them out of a facility that's unsafe probably seems to be consensus.
I know for a while too, we rented some office space.
Yeah, I mean, there may be several ways of moving forward, but if it's unsafe, it's unsafe.
Certainly always move everyone in the justice center, right?
There you go.
So, thank you, Councilor Bowlin.
I think Linda's going to have to...
So there's, there's, I think there's two issues, I think one is the immediate issue that we need to look at to make sure that the safety of the employees and the building, that that's taken care of, and then the secondary, I think, is a permanent location, final location, I think those are the two.
Yes, and if we do some sort of, if we come to some sort of, you know, farming people out and renting places, that that isn't a good 10-year plan, say, you know, whatever, if we, yeah, if we do some sort of stopgap measure, then what is our, what is our...
Real plan.
Yeah, we need a real plan.
It might have to be a, but if we don't have support to move forward with it, we may move them out for the sake of safety in the short term, but if the community's vision doesn't match ours, then there is no long-term...
Once you go door-to-door, you're going to...
Well, that's a reality, but that's, you know, like, I think we've already agreed that, you know, putting folks where they're safe is top priority.
Absolutely.
And I think we can do that, and if we, if the community says we're happy with them spread out, well, that's the community's choice, but I don't think it will be, I think, I think the community, my sense is that this community and most communities, if presented with what is necessary, will pony up. I think what we need to be careful of is making sure it's really necessary and we've done it in a responsible way.
Right.
I think, you know, if we go to the community and say, "This really is important, it's necessary," I think the folks will say, "Look, go ahead."
It's hard to argue with.
They typically back what needs to happen, so, but I don't want to go to them and say, "Let's build a, you know..." "Let's build a, you know, a brand-new Taj Mahal City Hall, because we really need it" if there's some other way.
Right.
Well, a year ago, two years ago, that the conversation, I think, would have, would have sounded differently than it would today in the public for a variety of reasons.
I agree.
I guess the two other issues that I just want to kind of touch on, and then I think we'd need to recess to executive session to discuss any specifics, but one is the council's feeling on the general location of where City Hall should be. We have the downtown, we have a new developing area on the north, we have a developing area on the south, and I'm not quite sure how council feels about the general area that City Hall should be, or if there is a preference or no preference.
Well, if I had, if I could just pick it from personal preference, I would say somewhere in the Academy Square area, you know, that seems to be the area in which our civic buildings are developing in a nice way, and that's accessible, it meets everything. You know, you could spread the city influence around the community in some fashion, but I think there's merit in having a core of municipal function. That's my personal opinion.
And just because you mentioned a specific one, but fortunately, it was a city-owned property, just to, Jay and I had talked about this before, not to talk about any specific potential property locations, but just--
I wasn't saying that side as much as that part of town, you know, as opposed to clear out the south end of town somewhere.
I have received some feedback from people on this, and I'm, like Barry, I kind of think that Academy Square's a nice area, we've got the justice center, and I think it'd be nice to kind of keep that all together, and it could be near Main Street, so it's still fairly close. But I've also received some comments, some feedback from people saying to keep it downtown more where it is.
Yeah.
Not right where it is necessarily, even on Second Street, but somewhere in that downtown core that's a little further downtown. So, just, I just heard both sides.
Well, and I would say that, I think I've heard some similar things through the years, but also, if we're talking about being really open-minded, if there was a compelling case to go outside of those parameters, I think I'd be, I'd want to hear about it to entertain it. I think so with the people.
I agree. I think we need to look at all the possibilities.
Yeah.
I agree, like Jason said, if it turns out that really it would be best because the maintenance building is also failing or is close, or, you know, that's within a five-year consideration, and we were going to do, we were going to consolidate those, I could say, you know, I could justify moving it to the south end of town because we're, that's the only place, say, that we could combine those facilities and really get the best bang for our buck without having to spend more money. So, I have heard people say, "Oh, it's great to have it downtown," which is awesome for people who are downtown. It would be great to have it out there. If there was a compelling reason, I could have it in the south, so I'm--
The truth is Lebanon is not so big that accessibility is going to be a problem.
Yeah, this isn't Portland. It's not, you know, wherever you put it, it's going to be out of somebody's way and more convenient for somebody else.
Yeah, it could go from three minutes to five minutes away.
So, downtown would be awesome, but I think a case could be made for almost anywhere if the price was right.
Especially with the price, exactly, and that's, you know, that's where that comes in, and we'll obviously explore that later in executive, but--
Why couldn't we just knock down the building we got there now and rebuild on that spot eventually?
Right. Don't know that's not a possibility.
That'd be right in the area. And also, I believe when the first talk came out about the new library, wasn't their property right over here that we were thinking about putting the library on right across the street? Doesn't the city own that lot?
Are you looking at me?
Yes.
I've heard that we do, but I don't know for sure. That wouldn't be a bad--
There are some other city properties in the downtown area that we do own.
That's an executive session.
Yeah, most, that's executive.
Well, I mean, I would say, actually, if, I mean, if you're talking about city-owned already property, I'm not as concerned about that for executive session. I mean, just so we're very clear on what's appropriate and what's not for executive session, because I don't want to be cutting people off and not being sure about what we can talk about. What we're trying to do is simply keep the city at a competitive advantage with other private parties. In other words, if the city has to go out there and say, "Hey, you know, we're looking at building this lot," and that lot suddenly appears to go up, you know, in price by 30%, that's not what is fair. And so, the executive session is basically, the purpose is to talk to specific parcels that we may be interested, whether it be a lease or a purchase or anything like that, and even areas around that that we may have to purchase for parking or something like that. So, that's the kind of discussion that we want to reserve for executive session so that we don't put ourselves as a city in an economic competitive disadvantage because of the public meeting laws and the open meeting laws and that kind of stuff. So, just so you understand the parameters of what we can and should and should not discuss in executive session, that's kind of the parameter. So, if we're talking about city-owned property that we already own and that being an option, I'm fine discussing that in this, we should, in fact, discuss that in this executive session because I don't, I don't see that following, falling into that executive session parameter, so. But, to answer your question, I have no idea what that property is.
Okay.
And whether we talked about it or not, I don't remember.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I remember a lot of properties were discussed then.
Yeah.
If we wanted to talk about some specific locations, I think we'd have to reconvene to executive--
Did you want to talk anymore about feel or, you know, as far as the type of facility, or is that something you'd rather wait for later?
Well, again, I think I've gotten the sense that everybody agrees that a town hall or city hall should have a sense of community and a sense of community feel, and I think that's something that we would have to consider relative to the size of whatever parcel we were going to be dealing with, that we couldn't get a half-acre parcel that would literally just be the footprint of the building and not be able to provide some sort of feel, so.
One of the things, when I was speaking to Dana, we were talking about it, and, you know, we were talking about the feel of a City Hall, and do you want just this flat building that you really go up to and you go in and out, and that's it? Or do you want something that maybe has a little bit of an entryway or a courtyard or something where people could actually assemble or come in and feel like part of the community? So, I think that, knowing how we built the library and the justice center and how nice those buildings are and the entryways and things, and I think that's the way I would like to see it go, is that direction, is so that it's a comfortable, it's a community, it's everybody's building, it's not some big palace.
Too much room for protesters, because you don't want to make them too comfortable.
And you can't protest because you're on city council.
Yeah.
Well, and also, I think that those two buildings were built soundly, and they were built with a little bit of flair, but not over the top. And I would hate to see like a pole barn looking thing, because there's, what's to be proud of that? But I think we struck a really good balance with those two buildings.
We did, too.
And I think those served us well for a long time, and if that sort of mentality was behind construction, I think we did a home run with people, too.
And they were, the thought process was really, you know, stay with the brick look, say. I mean, that wasn't outrageously expensive, but it was, it was historically, you know, closer to the original building that was on, you know, they were trying to stay true to the high school look, and it was awesome that the medical college then kind of did the same thing, so we kind of have a little corridor of more historically, I don't want to say accurate, but they had the flavor of the older buildings.
A little classy.
Yeah, a little bit, without being outrageous.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you want to move into? Okay, at this point, then we will adjourn the work session, and if we could clear the room, and we'll go into executive session.